Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's Councilman Towns, that's in case four.
We pray with him, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the business of this county that you have brought before us. Please help us be good stewards of all the resources our county has and help us to be mentally prepared for the future as we move toward adopting a new budget. Help us make decisions to the best of our ability on issues brought forward to us today. In his name we pray.
Amen.
Number four, approval of agenda. I would like to amend the agenda and add Mr. Harlow to speak about Memorial Day service. At number nine, to move everything back if that's possible. Did you see he had something?
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to ask for an addition to personnel on executive session of contractual matter for land purchase.
Do you have a motion for amendment? Motion is second.
And, Mr. Chairman, let the record reflect that each one of those involves an exigent circumstance. In other words, time matters.
All right, got a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Number five, approval of minutes, April 26, 2023, May 9, 2023, and May 16, 2023.
I make a motion. I make a motion to amend.
Motion is second. Motion is second. All in favor? Any opposed? Number six, ordinance reading. Number 23-03, third reading, Dillon County Dirt Road Acceptance and Maintenance Ordinance Reading. They propose ordinance that provides for and allows a process for the county to accept dirt roads that meet certain criteria and that meet the criteria of first reading of ordinance. Requires a motion.
I make a motion to pass that ordinance.
And a motion is second. Got a motion, a second. Any more discussion?
And, Mr. Chairman, I handed out to the council members and is on your desk a revised copy of the ordinance, which is in accordance with discussions at the Public Works Committee meeting Friday afternoon. There's some things in there that are requested that make it more assertive and fill in the blanks.
Yes, sir.
So, in the event, I believe, Mr. Coward, aren't you the chairperson of that committee?
Yes, sir.
In the event you decide to accept the recommendations of the Public Works Committee, which is before you, you'll need a motion and a second to amend the ordinance in accordance with the handout I just put before you.
I make a motion, second, amend the handout. Got a motion? What did amend the handout?
Could I ask a question? This includes those changes?
Yes, sir.
My second motion. Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number seven, second reading, number 2305, An Ordinance to Provide Budget Appropriations for County Purposes in the County of Dillon for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, and Adopt and Implement Rates, Fees, and for Other Tax Purposes and County Appropriation Purposes, and to Establish Tax Millet to Provide for the Budget. Requires a motion. Make that motion. Got a motion, is it a second?
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion?
We think that we might amend this thing at the second reading, add some things to or whatever. Do we do it after this execution?
You can do it on third reading. You can do it on third reading.
We can do it on third reading. This is second reading, so you'll have to read it one more time. You could amend it then.
Got a motion, got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number eight, resolution, number 23-06, Dillon County Council Resolution in Opposition to a Lot of Bang LLC's Proposed Bond Testing Facility.
Mr. Chair, this is the ordinance that the attorney drew up for us and referenced it. I'm proposing the planned project that's going over in the Oakland area on the North Carolina side with the explosive ordinance company that's looking to go in there. I think Robinson County has their meeting on June the 5th, and they want to get this in before that meeting.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
All right. Motion is second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, number nine, Mr. Harlow.
Mr. Chairman, and the other members of the Dillon County Council, my name is John Harlow, and I am the Dillon VFW Post 6091 commander, and I come before you today to say thank you, thanking for your past and continued support of the VFW and of veterans in Dillon County. Dillon County Council has always been helpful to veterans in matters affecting veterans. I want you to know that it has not gone unnoticed, and my main reason for being here at this time is to say thank you. Dillon County Council was very supportive years ago in helping veterans establish Veteran Square, located on the grounds of the City County Building, and you have been supportive of veterans all the years since that time. We veterans say thank you to County County Administrator Tim Harper for his recent efforts to fix the lighting of Veteran Square, to level some depressions on the grounds, and power wash the monuments and walkways. I had expressed to him our desire to have this all done in time for the Memorial Day holiday, and he made it a priority and got it done for us veterans and for the community. Thank you. Regarding Memorial Day, veterans and others from our community will gather at 11:00 a.m. on Monday, honor the memory of the 91 men and one woman named on the Veteran Square Memorial Wall as killed in action from Dillon County dating back to World War I and up through Iraq and Afghanistan. These are the sons and the daughter of Dillon County families. They have not been forgotten. A memorial wreath will be ceremoniously placed at the Memorial Wall on Monday in their honor. Retired United States Air Force Chief Master Sergeant Jordan Williams will make remarks about the service of veterans in defending our American values and protecting our democracy. Chief Williams is a 1981 graduate of Dillon High School, a veteran who attained the highest enlisted rank in our military. Mr. Jim Crawford of our community and members of the Master Carolina Choral will sing our National Anthem. The name, military branch, and date of death of every Dillon County veteran passing away since last Memorial Day will be read aloud and a bell will be tolled in his or her honor. And there will be an award made for a veteran now deceased but who distinguished himself or herself while on active duty. It will be presented to the family in honor in memory of their loved one. Memorial Day ceremonies in May, Patriot Day ceremonies in September, and Veteran Day ceremonies in November are all veteran programs held at Veteran Square. The support provided by Dillon County Council to veterans and putting on these programs is remarkable and very appreciated. We at the Dillon VFW are pleased to help support these and other programs, and we're not alone. We at the Dillon VFW appreciate the support of other Dillon County veteran organizations, specifically the Dillon County Veterans Affairs Office, Dillon County American Legion Post 32 and its auxiliary, Unit 32, Dillon County American Legion Post 249, the Dillon County Veteran of the Year Organization, and that is the organization that actually organizes the Memorial Day, Patriot Day, and Veteran Day programs. And finally, Dillon County Help for Veterans Chairman Johnny Daniels. In addition to these patriot programs I mentioned, we at the Dillon VFW and these other veteran groups that I named actively work to help veterans in Dillon County and their families, like work with veterans to help them apply for VA benefits, getting transportation to VA facilities, providing help with groceries, and helping with other veteran needs. As you know, there are homeless veterans in Dillon County. There are addicted veterans in Dillon County. There are hungry veterans in Dillon County, and there are veterans in Dillon County dealing with PTSD and depression. The help that you provide to the veteran organizations that I named translates directly to helping these veterans and their families. I thank you for that help. In closing, the support the Dillon County Council gives the veterans is paramount in all that we do for local veterans. And I'm pleased to come before you as the Dillon VFW Post 6091 commander and say once more thank you. God bless our active duty troops. God bless our veterans and their families. God bless Dillon County, and God bless America. Thank you for your time greatly.
Number 10, PD Workforce Developmental Work Center and Partnership with Dillon County.
Mr. Chair, this is a memorandum of understanding that we do with the PD workforce on an annual basis. It's no cost to the county, but it's just so that you know what is going on with the PD Workforce Development Board. You have a copy of all their information in your packet, so it's just an adoption of the memorandum of understanding.
Do I have a motion? I make a motion, is it a second? Got a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Number 11, Northeastern Technical College, Dr. Kyle Wagner, in Dillon.
Thank you, guys, for inviting me to come to talk, and I want to do some quick highlights for you for Northeastern Technical College. We're in our 22-23 year right now, which means it actually ends in July, so I don't have the current updated enrollment for Dillon County for this year. But in 2020, I want to show you the growth that's going on with Northeastern Technical College. We have 347 undergraduate students and 52 graduates. In 21-22, we had 522 undergraduate students with 88 graduates. And this year, we're probably going to be about that same number, or maybe a little more, a little more graduates and about the same number of students as we continue forward. Currently, six years ago when I started here, we had one employee in Dillon, and we had about 75 students that used the Dillon campus. Currently, we have 10 full-time employees now hired in Dillon County, providing education to Dillon County. We have two part-time employees, and we have numerous adjunct instructors teaching classes Monday through Sunday. And they are very busy with classes, providing education and technical workforce for Dillon County. Mike Thompson here is my CE coordinator. He works for the industry. We currently work with multiple industries throughout Dillon County, which is a problem that we're having, and that is our facilities. Our facilities are busting at the seams. If you go out to the Dillon campus and you walk through there, it is crowded. We've got an allied health program there, which we're doing CNA, phlebotomy, and medical assistance, and the program is full. We have a request from McLeod Health to start a licensed nursing program, and we're currently right now trying to hire someone to teach that program, and we have no space to provide that program for the area. McLeod Health and us are in negotiations that they might have space at the hospital for us to use as an interim place to start the program, but they're in desperate need of nurses in the community and would like to have us assist them with that. Dillon students have received over 3.5, almost $3.5 million in scholarships, grants, and local money to assist them with their degrees. If you look there, you can see all the degrees and certificates that we offer. We put to the general public, there's a whole list there. And with the ATech Center Partnership for High School Students, we have multiple programs, and we have over 100 and close to about 200 students in dual credit any given day. Matter of fact, this Friday, I'll be naming 18 students at the graduation that have their associate's degrees completed upon graduation of high school. We are very active in the community, and a lot of people don't realize that, is because our building is small, we're crowded, and we're doing a lot of training in industry. The problem with doing training in industry is industry cannot let the general public come in. So, the general public, if we're offering electronics training courses there and we're doing it for, say, Purdue Chicken, they cannot allow the general public to come in and let certain employee of their company. And that's really limiting us to create a work-ready workforce for Dillon County for companies moving here. We can only do it in their facilities, and it's really restrictive what we can do. Our big needs right now are CDL parking lot. We were using a parking lot here in town. Somebody bought the building, and we're not allowed to use the parking lot anymore. We're now, our CDL students are now driving 200 miles a day round trip to Chara to do CDL. And it's creating a problem with our trucks. We now have three semi-trucks. We have 100% pass rate, 100% licensing rate for our CDL students, and 100% placement rate. There is multiple jobs for CDL operators, and we're literally driving the truck here. The students are getting in the truck, and we're driving them to Chara or Marlboro County where we have parking lot for them to actually operate. We also are in desperate need of advanced manufacturing training facility. On the backside of the paper, we bought 26 acres out there to put this in, and we have now construction in Marlboro County going on, and we have construction going on in Chara, in two locations in Chara, to bring advanced manufacturing to those communities. Those three projects alone is about $20 million in buildings. We need space to be able to serve students. We're doing a lot of stuff in the industry. We're doing a lot of stuff at the ATech Center. At evenings, we borrow the ATech Center, and we teach classes there at the ATech Center in the evenings. The other big need we have is a nursing center, which McLeod is helping us with, and classroom and lab space. And I don't mean classroom like people think about, English classroom, those kind of classrooms. We're talking biology space. We're talking areas that they can go in and do hands-on. Virtual reality is becoming a norm for higher education. We need space so we can set up the computers, we can set up the virtual training center so we can do that. That's what classrooms are done now. We don't build new classrooms because we have that at our other campus, but we don't have classrooms here in Dillon. We believe the Dillon campus, the numbers that I shared with you, 522, it could be three times that if we had space. Space is key to local buy-in. I can't get federal dollars to build facilities unless I have local buy-in. I can't get state money unless I get local buy-in. So, in order for us to move forward with facilities, we got to have more local buy-in as an institution. Right now, that's what's going on in Marlboro. That's what's went on in Chesterfield. Chesterfield has two projects, over $10 million for a brand-new campus in Mackey and a huge manufacturing plant that we're, a manufacturing training center we're doing in Chara. We're actually removing three buildings, building one brand-new one that's bigger than the three we're removing. And that was done through a generous donation from Schafler, a million-dollar donation, and about $7 million with state funding, and the county that year put up over $530,000 to make that happen. Local buy-in is key. Any federal grant I go after to build buildings or to put programming in, I need a 20% match. And it's really hard for us to train industry when industry are coming to us and asking us, can we train work-ready workforce, and we don't have a facility to do it in. And we really, really are in desperate need of a facility in Dillon County. And we believe that this is a growing community. We believe this is a community that needs to be invested in. We're willing to invest in it. You can see that we went from one employee to 10 employees, two part-time people. We are investing, but we are to capacity. Matter of fact, we're beyond capacity, and we're going to have to address what we need for facilities. Any questions?
Have you talked to any of these industries out here about? You know, you said somebody up in Chesterfield.
Yes, we have industries that are interested in helping, but it starts with local buy-in. We got to have that local buy-in. Schafler came to the table because we had local buy-in from the county. That is key, key.
What did the county of Chester do for you?
What's that?
What did the county over there do for you?
The county normally on a yearly basis, they give us about $270,000, $280,000 a year in millage, and that particular year, they put an extra $200,000 toward the building project of extra dollars. And that allows us then to go to industry and say, the county's invested, they think this is a good idea, this is going to benefit you as an industry, would you invest? They invested, and he was a big key on that. He gave you all kinds of details on that. And then we went to the state government, and we said, look, our local industry's invested, our community's invested, this is a high need for the Chesterfield area. Can, will the state come in? And our legislators came behind and helped push that. State tech system, which is who we report to, they came in behind it, supported it because of that local buy-in, the industry buy-in. So, that's really key to have that conversation.
We give all some. We don't give too much, or something. We give all some.
Yes.
But y'all started over there. We have one building out here. Y'all have more in Chesterfield.
We have two buildings here. And that was before I came.
Where's that one?
They're right there beside each other. They're right there beside each other. And Dillon right now's contribution is about $120,000 a year, and that was based on a legal case that was done about three or four years ago to get that $120,000, because originally we got millage from Dillon, and they decided to stop paying that millage. And then they went to a case, and it was $120,000, or $125,000 is what it settled on. And we appreciate the $125,000, but back whenever we had one employee and only 75 employees, that was very adequate. But now, we've grown the programs, we need that more, and that's the first question that we get asked when we go ask for money from the state or the federal. We have to put in those grants, what is our local match? What is our local buy-in? And that's key.
You were saying that, you know, the campus is always packed. Now, I ride through there every day. I hardly ever see anybody there. Is that packed as far as you guys are doing a lot of virtual classes or what? Because I pass that campus quite a bit and hardly ever see many people on the campus, maybe one or two cars.
Do you stop and go inside the building?
I have stopped occasionally, but I don't stop freely.
Because transportation is an issue in rural communities, and so a lot of students commute with each other. You can stop there. Our classes are packed. We started biology about three years ago, started out with two, three students, and right now, we run 17 students, 15 students per class, and the classroom wasn't designed for that many students. Right now, we have a community room there. The community room now is a nursing training center, and we literally have to move equipment to teach the class. So, if we're running phlebotomy class, we have to move equipment over to the corner, set up the biology area, I mean, set up the phlebotomy area. The students do that. At the end of that class, we then have to tear that area down, move it to the side, put it in the corner, and bring out the roll-around beds and everything to set up the CNA lab. Whenever we're doing the medical terminology or the, we do the medical assistance program, it's the same thing. We have to move equipment around to accommodate the students to do their physical labs. And the space, the buildings, I wasn't here, it didn't design the buildings, they don't have laboratory space in them. A lot of them are classrooms, and most of the classrooms are smaller than half the size of this room. They were designed to hold about nine students, and we're packing 12 to 14 students in those classrooms.
How much space to sit down on a ward if you use that, they use the whole side of the little.
They use one room.
Just one room?
It's one office space that they lease from us, and that's a partnership, so SD work students, which are your staff of work students, your students that have financial disabilities, they can access the college. We have a really good relationship with them. They're also at our Marlboro campus, and we exchange students. So, if we have a student that comes in and needs some of their needs, we can refer them, and that helps them come to school. They provide daycare money so students can go to college and get daycare. They provide transportation dollars. They provide all kinds of assistance to students. It's a partnership that complements each other, and we've had a really good relationship with them. It was good here in Dillon, so we expanded it to Marlboro, and we have that partnership with Marlboro. So, that, and they use the front, there's a little office up there that, 10 by 15 maybe, that they use, and then we share a computer testing lab. Tuesdays, Thursdays during certain times of the day, they do testing in our computer lab that's up there, and then whenever they're done, then we use it for classroom space when they're not using it a couple times during the day. And we utilize that space together. So, that's kind of how we've been utilizing the building. Please stop. Stop, stick your head in there. We're in summer classes right now, so of course, it's a little bit slower right now than it normally is, but during a semester, you walk in there and it's elbow-to-elbow when it comes to students.
You just want to bust a car down there and stop. They're trying to get in their workforce, they're looking for jobs. It's how people go to school when that side is filled up on that.
I mean, these are our numbers, and these are how many students are going out there. And we're actually really good at scheduling, so we try to schedule bigger classes whenever we have lower, slower time of the day. We try to do smaller classes more times of the day so that way students can have the space, because we have one laboratory for both buildings.
Are y'all teaching Dillon High School using that space?
We use Dillon High School.
How many of y'all students are dual enrollment students at Dillon High School?
How many at Dillon High School? You mean the current students now?
Yeah, or Dillon, because y'all do LADA, do y'all do LADA like?
Yes, LADA, because of their IB program, they don't do a lot of dual enrollment because of the IB program. The Lakeview, we have probably about, it's a smaller school, 100 maybe students, 40, it fluctuates between 75 and 100 per year. Dillon High School runs about 200. And then ATech Center is a little bit different. We have some equipment there that we use in the evenings and the daytime. The ATech Center uses the equipment, so we share the equipment, and that situation works okay, but we can't offer classes in the daytime at the ATech Center because the high school students are there. So, that becomes a conflict.
I know, didn't y'all in Marlboro, maybe was it shopping center y'all in up there? Have you ever thought, have you thought about the one down the road? Have y'all checked into that one that's right down the road from Northeastern Tech, the old BiLo?
I don't know where that one's at.
And it's got to be a parking lot out there, too.
We looked at a couple buildings down there as an alternative, and the situation with Marlboro is, yeah, we got the Marlboro campus. There was a lot more to that story. We had a downtown campus where we couldn't offer any workforce training because it was a downtown location, and it was restricted on what we could do there due to noise, and you couldn't have a forklift down there, you couldn't have that kind of stuff. So, we had to find a new location. So, what happened was, was that building was open, we moved out there, and to tell you the truth, we're into that, we're doing the second remodeling on that building, and we're into that building now about $9 million. So, having an old shopping center is a lot of money to convert, and we're building a building that's very similar to the same size as the whole Marlboro campus in Chara. The pride of that one's about a $7 million project. So, when you look at the two, whether it's a shell or not, it's kind of a wash depending on what you're working with when it comes to construction. But the Dillon campus, we got the 26 acres, we bought that acres to expand. The big thing is, is we need local buy-in, we need people to understand what the colleges' needs are and what we're trying to do to the community. It's really hard to train a work-ready workforce when we don't have facilities to do that.
Let me ask you this, is the school district charging you guys anything, the whole classes inside of the ATech?
No, they do not.
So, is it, if you were renting that from somewhere, could you not have them draw up an agreement to show that they're actually giving you this for tax write-off for whatever purpose is, and present that as part of our county match, because it's county schools? And so, if you were anywhere else, you'd have to pay for it, where we're giving you facilities free in the county.
We do it only whenever they're in classes. So, we only do it in the evenings when they're offering alternative school. We only do it during the hours that the building's open. If we offered any other time of the day, we pay for the use of the building. So, we try to leverage the time when they're using the building, and they're only using partial part of the building, and then we try to use the other part of the building. So, we try to leverage that resource to the maximum that we can, and the most cost-effective for both the school district and for us as an institution. But that space is very limited, and it doesn't have a lot of space in there. We have a CNC shop in there, a machine tool shop. If you haven't been there and saw, it's about, there's probably $350,000 worth of equipment there, and if you put 12 students in there, it's elbow-to-elbow. It's that tight in there to use that facility. So, that facility is a little on the small side for technical education, and the reason why is technical education's changed a lot. Technical education has changed a lot when it comes to what they do in plants and how that the person interacts with the equipment. You don't no longer stay on a assembly line. You don't no longer stand on a assembly line and do work. What you do instead is, is you're running multiple lines. You might be an operator and you might run four or five stations, maybe even up to six stations from one location. And that might be a couple thousand square feet of equipment. So, it's a multitask, it's a complex system. And to drill it down to a little desktop project doesn't really give the students a realistic expectation of what the expectations are in the field. So, we try to, in technical education, you know as much as I do, it's important that the student gets an experience that's going to be similar to what they're going to do on the job. Otherwise, they're not going to be effective on the job. And so, what we try to do is create space that resembles what industry will look like and be able to then duplicate that when they walk into the field and perform. So, the big key is, that I wanted to make you aware of, is, is we are in desperate need of a training facility like an advanced manufacturing facility. What that is, it's an open warehouse. And we can leverage money to get that, but without the local buy-in, it's really impossible for us to get that grant. So, if we go after, say, $5 million, we gotta have 20% match. That 20% match can be state money and it can be local money and they like it to be a mix of both. So, that's why it's important that we have that local match to help do that. Plus, we get points or we get rankings higher when we have local match. Otherwise, it looks like that we're trying to do something the community doesn't want. And that's the importance of the community match. The community has bought into it and they're interested in having the college there. We have great people in the community and we have great opportunities in this community to grow and to expand. But we need to have space so we can do that. We need, and we have held classes everywhere under the sun. We're holding classes right now and I know Clough is not in Dillon, but we're doing it in the Opera House in Clough because we have a need of a company right there called Eris that needs workers and we're doing it in a building there in the downtown area. And we are now, we can only do certain things there and then we can't do it. So, that company's allowed us to have space in their building to do that, but it's back to the same problem. Only their employees can do that, they can't let the general public come into their plant and work and do projects in their plant. And that's the same problem we have here when we train in the area. And so, that's why I'm here to tell you that we're doing a lot in the community, we've got a lot of students engaged with the college, and there's more students that want to be engaged. There's more opportunity, there's opportunity here to have a work-ready workforce. You've got a company moving just a little bit south of you that's going to be wanting, I think, 1,200 employees in the electromagnetic field. We need, and one of their projections is they're going to hire people from the Dillon area. That's them leaving the community. We're saying, we need to train the people here, so the companies want to locate in Marlboro County and actually then they can work here and litter and spend money here and be productive to the community. And the situation is, if I train them and they go to another county, they're spending their money in that county. And that's what we want to avoid is that. And so, we really need that training dollars. Because if they go down to Florence-Donington and they train, that don't cost the county any money, but guess what? There's a really high, there's a really high chance that they're going to work in Florence. And then what they do is they live here, they moved and they work in Florence and that's where they go shopping, that's where they buy their groceries and they get off work, that's where they eat their lunches, that's where they're spending their money. And we don't want to become a bedroom community to Florence, we want to be a thriving community with our industry here and we want people to live here and work in those companies. And without a training facility and without the ability to train these students, we are spinning our wheels and my fear is, we're very successful at what we're doing now by bringing students in, but we need more space. We need investment in the facility. And that takes state dollars and that takes local dollars and then I can go leverage that for federal dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Wood.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bring the Noise mission, Sasha Sales.
I can't stand that long, but is it okay? I won't be that long. I can do it from here? Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. My name's Sasha Sales and my mission is bring the noise. It's to help improve the quality of the community by linking resources to the, I'm sorry, so with the gentleman on the panel firstly. This is my helper. This is Nicholas, everyone. And I'm linking the community to the resources that fit individual needs. It's to help them find new homes, housing repairs, rehabilitation of housing owned and occupied, single-family housing, repair loans, grants to elderly homeowners to remove health and safety hazards. I actually have the Habitat for Humanity. I brought him here to Dillon last month and we did a workshop at the library, so he's going to allow me to help. He went with the application starting in September. I'm an application packager for the USDA out of Florence. I'm doing some applications. I have 10 people that I'm working with now to get their homes repaired. And I'm also working with the community too. I live in the Dillon Manor Apartments over here where those shootings took place. Me and my son have to sleep on the floor because of the crime rate, because of the shootings, because of the gun violence that's going on in our apartment complex. And I was able to go through the Minister Alliance Program. They're coming out there on tomorrow in Dillon Manor Apartment and praying to the community. And I look forward to seeing if y'all available tomorrow at 6:00 PM to come to the, to come out and support. Because without y'all, we can't, we don't have a voice. And we know that there's programs that are available to the hood housing program. And I looked up some information, there's a $10 million Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant that helped us right here that own hood housing to get the surveillance that we need, to get the, anything that we need surveillance, the fence pull-up around those complexes and stuff to keep the crime out of there. We have babies there. And those gun shootings, that shooting took place while my son was sleeping and I had to cover him. Just the fear that's in the neighborhood. But I was able enough through the power of God to go and talk to the men and let them know that this is what needs to be done. Now, it's a little safer to go home. At first, we were scared to go home and come out in the streets and stuff because of the shooting. The babies wouldn't go to the park because we didn't know what was going to take place. Now that they got things put in place and we can see the change and we see the results now. So, whatever I can do to help clean the community, awareness or whatever's going on in the community, that's my mission, is to bring the noise, let people know what's going on in the community, find the resources and get the help. I can't do it without any of you. I need all of you help. Thank you for the bus that you brought to us and, you know, the different resources that are here that are available. Thank you, Ms. Teachers, thank you, Mr. Robbie, every one of you for your help that you helped me over some of the storms. And I'm looking forward to working with everybody to give back to my community. September the 2nd, I have an event coming up down here down Main Street where we're going to do a big launch and act for that Bring the Noise to let everybody know that it's more than crime in Dillon County. We have good things here, people that turn their lives around and come back and make an impact here. And to bring the awareness, to bring some equity back into homes, you know, after children are living in poverty or whatever that's going on, they're coming home, there's no good flooring or whatever the roof has fallen in, maybe we can bring value back into their homes, they'll learn to appreciate their things a little better. Instead of, you know, so much violence, we don't know what the cost is, but if we can help them with a little something that's come home to value, then maybe there'll be a change in their community instead of shooting and killing each other. So, whatever I can do with Sasha Sales, I'm here to bring some noise, to bring y'all some awareness, whatever I can do to help anyone, I'm available. But I do have another meeting to get to at 6:30. I didn't want to rush it, didn't want to take up too much time, but I'm so excited to see everyone, this is my first time coming and I look forward to working with everyone. If I can help your families in any situation, I hope I got some more business cards, I'll leave some with Ms. Russell, I'll get some and bring them to the office, whatever I can do to help anyone in the neighborhood, that's what I will do. That's what I do. It's nonprofit. If they donate something, it'll go to me helping the children that need backpacks. If their family's been going through DSS, whatever they're going through, to give them some shoes, they're going to feed anything, any donation, it will go straight back to the community to help the community. So, I thank y'all for your time. If y'all have any questions, I'll take some questions, but I do have another meeting to get to at 6:30.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thirteen committee appointments. District 1. District 2. I think I have your next. District 3.
I've got a board of zoning and appeal, James Hayes before him. And the Tax Appeal Board, I'd like to appoint Vernon Brayton, he's on that one, be appointed.
District 5. District 6.
Mr. Chairman, we have two openings on the PD Regional Council Government Board. And they've got a certain specific things tied to them. The first is minority person, Officer Scott had that before. And it's got the minority, I would like to, not only Demole Campbell for that minority position, that's a position that Officer Scott had.
I want to put Miss Dawkins on that same board he was talking about, she's a business person.
It's going to be done separately. The next position is Major Bathey had that position, you know, he died, there's got to be.
Do we need to vote on this stuff separately?
There's got to be a minority business person and that would be her.
That'd be hers.
Yeah, we got to put on.
Separate. The fourth, Major Bathey.
This is what committee?
PD Council.
Call PD Council.
It's the PD Council.
Her is still on.
You have four positions on.
Four positions, you got Mr. Buzzie, her, and you had Archie.
Right now, I'm on the board and Harold Mudd is on the board and there's two more openings in there.
You need to do them separate, you said?
You need to do those.
I'll probably say the motion on Demole Campbell.
Well, I'm saying, we probably need to vote on these separate, do your cons think separate?
Okay.
Do you have anything on these committees?
No.
I don't either, so make a motion on these and then we'll.
James Hayes and Vernon Brayton.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Make a motion to the second.
Second.
Any more discussion, all in favor? Anybody?
I guess the next is going PD Council Board, Minority Member, I'd like to, Demole Campbell.
You need to get a second. You need to get a second.
I'll make a second.
Any more discussion, all in favor? Anybody?
I like the former Mr. Dickson, on the PD Council Board, Marry, get this on.
Make a motion to the second. Second. Any more discussion, all in favor? Anybody?
Mr. Chair, we're going to executive session, could I have a, make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to introduce Brian Braddock. Brian is the rep, works at Congressional Fry's Office. Brian also serves on the Florida City Council, so he's here tonight and I wanted to introduce him to y'all so you know who to go for for the money.
If I drop off y'all in executive session, I'll drop off the car to each of y'all's spots.
Executive session, personnel matter and contractual.
Contractual matter for landowners.
Yeah. Prepare the motion.
I'll make the motion if we want to.
Make a motion. All in favor? Any opposed? We're now going to executive session, where no action will be taken. And once we get done, everybody can come back in. Where no action was taken, we'll move on to number 15, adjourned, prepare the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion and second?
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor? Any opposed? Meet and adjourn.